Okay, call the meeting to order and and if you follow me with the pledge of allegiance, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, roll call please.
Counselor Reeves Camp.
Here.
Counselor Grizzle.
Here.
Counselor Steinhebel.
Here.
Counselor Bolin.
Here.
Counselor Stouter.
Here.
And Counselor Furlough. Doesn't look like he's on yet.
That's a maybe. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on. Consent calendar. We've got the agenda for the Lebanon City Council Agenda tonight. Board minutes from the Planning Commission, August 19th and September 16th. Certified election results. And council minutes from November 4th, 2020. And liquor license off-premise liquor application for the seller LLC, Sugar Vibes Donut Company LLC. I'll entertain a motion for the consent calendar.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Alright, the consent calendar is approved for tonight.
Hello.
Hey, Robert.
Okay, thank you.
Can you hear us?
I can.
Okay, well, it's perfect timing because it's time to give you a little recognition for your hard work on the city council. We have a plaque that we have for you. Robert Furlough, City Council, Board One, 2014 to 2020. In recognition and appreciation for six and a half years of commitment, accomplishments, and contributions to the city of Lebanon. And I know no one will be able to really see the, whoa, ooh, that's kind of weird. Whoa, okay, so it's invisible. It's an invisible plaque, so. But anyways, Robert, thank you so much for your service. I remember, and I'm sure several of the counselors remember, when we interviewed, we were looking for someone and you stepped up and we really appreciate it. I know you'd never done anything like that in the community and it was really nice. And all those years and the commitment that you made, really appreciate your service and thank you very much.
Thank you very much. It's been a pleasant six or seven years.
It has, and we'll get this plaque over to you tomorrow. We'll get it delivered to you. COVID style.
Thank you. I told Nancy I'd enjoy my, having my Board One plaque. My name, that'd be kind of fun.
Very good. Yep. Alright, next up, JS Maps and IT GIS Systems Coordinator, Casey McMillan.
Well, good evening and thank you guys for giving me the time here on the agenda. It is much appreciated. I wanted to, I guess, kind of start just by saying that the city since I've been here has really had a small, like three or four web maps that we have used for city departmental staff. And at the end of 2020, the software that those maps run on was becoming obsolete. So, at the beginning of this year, we decided to enter into an enterprise agreement with our existing GIS software company. And that has really given us the ability to really expand our web and field map templates and applications. So, I was hoping to take just a few minutes of your guys' time to kind of give you a quick rundown on what the city now has available and what we're using and kind of where we're headed with it. So, with that, if everybody can see my screen currently. I'm seeing not.
See it great.
Excellent. So, this is our public web map gallery. This web map is actually linked to the city website. So, from the GIS department tab on the city website, you can get to this web map gallery. And these are not only publicly available, but should be publicly available on any device, meaning any computer, cellphone, tablet, you name it, iPad, Android, matters not. These apps will all run on any device. And I figured I would just give you a relatively quick rundown on what we have out here for folks. So, from these little tabs, you launch the main applications. And all of our web maps have a quick disclaimer, which kind of just gives our GIS legal disclaimer here and has folks accept it to get past it to get into the map. This is our zoning designation layer. So, you'll see here all of the zoning layers within the city. And in any of these areas, if people click, then they get kind of a breakdown of what is available here, what the descriptions are. And if they click on the link, then it takes them out to the website where they obviously have more development code listings. The second web map here, again with the disclaimer, is our public utilities map. And as we zoom in here, you can see that all of our underground utilities, be it water, sanitary sewer, or storm drain, are in this map. And it really gives the public the ability to kind of search for their address and see where all of their sewer lines and things are around the street. And again, all of the features are clickable. If we click on anything, we kind of get more of the detailed information about what is available there.
Pretty cool.
Yeah. We also have a floodplain map. So, this should give all of our users the ability to push in their address and have that address plot on this map. And they can see whether or not they are within that 100-year floodplain. And while it may not be incredibly useful, there is also a zoom slider on this too, so they can kind of zoom back and forth and slide the floodplain in and out to see exactly where, you know, what things, you know, maybe of their yard or of their houses are actually covering. This is one of my favorite maps admittedly. This is our city parks and landmarks map. And so, what you'll see on this map is really most of the city-sponsored landmarks around the city. And if you click on any of these, you get a nice little picture that we've got of each of the parks with what amenities each park has. And then for all of them that have the applicable option, that web link will take them out to the actual website. And where applicable, they can also, you know, reserve services or park facilities and things like that. I've also got some things that aren't actual city facilities, you know, fire department, for instance. And again, where possible, any of these links will take folks out to the actual website of whatever that landmark or park is. And then this map, which I'm sure you guys won't be interested in all in, is our city council board map. Again, this allows our citizens to type in their address, which will plot on the map. And then once their address is plotted, if they click on the boundary that they're within, it not only says who your individual councils are, counselors are, but these are also links. If we click this, it automatically generates an email to said counselor. And if I get rid of this, cancel out of here. And then again, if we click on the general link here, it takes us back out to the website, to the city council site where we've got more detailed information. So, those are the five current public web maps that we have live out on the website. Internally, we've also regenerated all of the departmental web maps that we have. So, the police have a map that actually, I guess I could launch some of these. I don't know how much time we want to spend here. But, you know, the police have a specific web map that has layers like the thousand-foot school boundary. You can also see our public camera layer here, which has more information about public citizens that have volunteered the use of their cameras for the police department. There's a library map, which is really a pretty straightforward map that library patron, excuse me, library staff can use to double-check if patrons are within the city limit boundary, if they verify for a library card. This is another engineering map, similar to that public utilities map that we saw. But we've got a ton of linked information. So, to all of that infrastructure that is in this map, you can click on any of the lines and that actually brings up the as-built drawing that was used to design and implement all of that infrastructure. And then we have a community development web map, which again is very similar to the engineering map. It has all of our building documents and planning documents linked to addresses and tax lots within the map. So, our community development and other staff around the city can link out to any of those documents that they need. Real quickly here is another staff mapping. So, part of the transition to this was not only just to be able to get the maps and the GIS into the hands of our staff easier, but once we kind of made that jump, we identified the need for city staff to be able to manipulate the GIS data. And so, what we've really been able to do is create these editing maps so that our staff, when they're out in the field doing things, they can open this mapping application and actually live update all of our GIS and correct any of that, any of the errors that are in it. You know, whereas previously, they would take a picture of it, send me an email with a picture and a description of what needed to be moved. And then I have to make the actual edits in the GIS, get it back out to them to verify. Now, they are literally making all of the updates live in the system. So, it is just really streamlined, all of our GIS updates. And one other quick thing that I wanted to demo before I ask if there are any questions is a little tablet emulator. So, these are the maps and applications available out in the field for our users. And you can see that we've even grouped people by fire department staff, you know, like Lebanon Police Department, Public Works, and then any of the individual utility groups. And so, our pilot program this year was this flush map. Historically, every year when we do the annual water system flush, I and the GIS department would print out a two-foot-by-three-foot map book of 80 pages. And then we would make roughly half a dozen to a dozen copies of that map book. And each team would have a huge two-foot-by-three-foot map that they would carry around in the truck while they were going from hydrant to hydrant, flushing each individual hydrant within the city. And they would have to note on a stack of paper all of these stats about how many gallons had gone, how many ports there were. All of that this year was completed with a tablet. So, the GIS department got several tablets and we borrowed a few from other departments so that we had each flush team with a tablet out in the field. And they were able to just use tablets going around and literally typing in all of their data live. So, we cut all of the paper completely out of the process and everything was completely live on digital tablets.
As well as we cut a lot of time out.
Unbelievable amounts of time, yeah. And I admittedly was worried about the technological hump of getting folks, you know, over the hump and using the technology. And I was amazingly surprised how simple and how quickly everybody picked it up. We really had very few hitches in this process at all. So, it was just really a great success.
That's. Question. On the public side, where is that located on the website?
Let's just go to the website and I will show you. So, from our main city website, if we go over the, hover over the inside city hall and you can see the GIS department tab right here. And since we click on the GIS tab, you'll see this is that public map gallery that has all of the maps. And then you can actually link out to the individual maps here.
Very good.
We also wanted to keep some of the, we used to have hard copy digital maps that I had, you know, PDFs basically that I had posted up here on the website. So, just in case there is a need for somebody to have a tangible paper map, that is still an option. But, boy, in terms of our function here at the city, going digital has just been, it's been a no-brainer. It really has been awesome.
Like on the city council wards, that's a great one. Is that overlinked on the council website also? So, like when they go there, instead of getting the old map, they get the new one?
It's not, but we can make that happen. That's a good call. And that actually is a great jump-off point too, that I wanted to make the comment that this is kind of a living system. We are consistently, as we continue to use it and find out better ways to use it and different solutions that are needed within the city. We're constantly changing this thing. So, if anybody has any suggestions or dreams that they would like to have or, you know, maps that they've seen other places that they'd like us to try to get set up, I am all on board with that. It's, I've been very pleased so far. Once we kind of got the GIS add into the hands of the users, the amount of requests that we got, even from city staff, that, you know, once they had it in their hands, it really got them thinking about how they could use it even better. And so, even from iteration one, we've already really just made leaps and bounds of improvements here. So, very exciting.
Nice.
Any other question?
Yeah, I had kind of odd question. It may, I kind of think I know the answer, but I just want to ask. Is there any security risk in any of the maps that are public? As far as like showing infrastructure from, you know, and I'm thinking of like terrorism or, you know, eco-terrorism, that kind of thing.
We definitely met, we definitely met with city management and discussed that. And that's part of the reason that some of the stuff that you'll see out on the public side is dumbed down from what we've got internally. So, any of those linked documents, you know, as-built drawings or anything with sensitive material, we've tried to keep on the inside. But I'm open to any thoughts from anybody that does have any concerns along those lines, I guess.
Great, well, good job. I'm all for automating and getting us off of paper and big maps, three-foot long. Yeah, that's awesome.
Excellent, excellent. I'm glad to hear it.
This will be so helpful for developers and land use applicants and people like me doing plan reviews. It's just the amazing amount of support that the city's providing. So, I for one am very grateful and always appreciative of our IT department. They're excellent.
Love it. I appreciate it. That's good to hear. And our next phase too is basically to have a landing spot for data downloads as well. Another, you know, fairly decent size of my GIS task is exporting data for, you know, whether it's contractors or public or folks that the city is working with. So, phase two is basically to have all of that data posted in a similar format that folks can just hop onto the website, download whatever data they need. As far as I'm concerned, the data is the public's. It's, you know, it's our citizens' data. It's our city's data. So, anybody that needs it should have access to it in my mind. Minus any of the sensitive stuff we discussed before, of course.
Great.
Excellent. Further questions? Thank you again for the time and much appreciated.
Katie?
Yeah.
You did have one question from Counselor Reeves Camp.
Katie, how do we, how do we let the public know about their ability to access this and use it? I guess, how do we market it to them?
That's a great question. I have considered if nothing else, at least putting out a, you know, a public notice. I'm certain we could put something in some of the papers, just if nothing else, so folks know about it. I guess, just off the top of my head, we could also maybe feature it on the top of the city website for a time too, until folks, you know, are familiar and know that it's there.
Yeah, and you know, it might be a good opportunity to do a little PR on the GIS side. Because a lot of people hear GIS and their eyes glaze over. You know, it's like, what is that? Why is it important to me? What difference? You know, but if we could actually explain a little bit about what it is and all the things, the data that we have, I think that would be good in some kind of press release.
Because once they learn to use it, they're gonna love it.
Yeah.
And I feel like most of it is fairly intuitive. I am anxious to hear some feedback on whether folks are, you know, kind of having problems figuring it out. But most of it is designed in a way that it's almost impossible to break. So, you know, and maybe that's a caveat that I put on the top is don't be afraid to click anywhere. And just try it out. You're not gonna break it. And if you do, I should be able to fix it.
Put the hook in the water.
That's right. You got it. Excellent. Any other questions?
Nice job.
Good job.
Well, thank you very much.
Yeah, great job.
And thanks for the time.
Okay, there we go. There we're back. Okay, at this point, we have a public comments section. Public comments were to be before 5:00 on December 8. And I believe, city clerk, if I'm not mistaken, we have two people tonight.
That is correct.
Okay, so first up, was there any particular order we needed to go in? I don't think so. Let's, I see Cassie here and Matt. They're both going to speak. Why don't you go ahead, Cassie, and you can go ahead and start.
Thank you. Hey, everybody. Good to talk to everyone again. Kyle, let everyone know what's going on with the Downtown Association recently. Our Economic Vitality Committee has been working on materials to help entrepreneurs navigate, to start business in our downtown. The idea is for this to streamline the process going forward to make it easy, easier and more tangible for businesses when they look to come into our downtown district. And this is going to be headed up by our committee chair, Alicia Rogers, who's also, of course, our economic development catalyst with the city. And then to help her out, Bill Fleischer will be along her side. So, between their working knowledge and experience, we're gonna have a great product going forward that will feel proud to send out to RAINN and other organizations that could benefit from having this information. And then our design committee, excuse me. Okay, so our design committee, this year, we were thinking what we could do different. Kind of in light of us not holding a Jingle Bell Run Walk this year. So, what we've decided to do is hold a downtown, excuse me, a community winter photo contest. So, that will run from the January 1st to February 11th. We are still working out the details of this, but we're asking people is for them to submit photos from the 2021 winter. So, if you have photos from holidays in the park with your family or just beautiful, please submit those photos. And we'll all get you guys more information as the details unfold. So, we're still working on that. And then, just want to let everyone know, for our Downtown Association, there's different avenues we'll be bringing, or different items we'll be bringing back this year, or sorry, for next year, 2021. And one of those is First Fridays, which was the themed First Friday. So, the themes that we had for last year that we had really promoted, we will be actually implementing this year and working within the parameters to do so safely and executing those well as we have our previous events. And of course, we're looking to hopefully garner more community support so we can bring forward concerts in the park again. Because last year, sadly, we were able to hold one summer concert series with the sponsorships we had, which was Summer Bands and Brews. And sadly, had to cancel concerts in the park. So, we're hoping to bring that back and walk back to life and along with the Jingle Bell Run for next year. But, one thing I just want to bring out for our promotions committee has had great expansion. And that will actually lead into Matt's public comment. Which is our promotions committee has expanded to incorporate a restaurant steering committee. Very much so like our concert steering committee that comes together to help put on that three-month concert series for both of those concert series. And along with the First Friday events, this committee is made up of all the downtown restaurant owners with one of the liaisons reporting to the promotions chair. And really what this group has been able to do is to navigate, or at least try to navigate through these challenges that COVID-19 has presented and really be a support to one another, even though, of course, individual businesses, under this, they're really coming together to make that happen. And so, one of the great things from the steering committee is that we're gonna be having a Downtown Association, Lebanon Downtown Association Dine Downtown Campaign. This campaign, of course, is gonna be driving people to dine downtown. We'll be uplifting all the downtown restaurants within downtown district to do so. And this campaign has a great signature event, which I think, I know at least Rebecca was able to enjoy, which was the Taste of Downtown, that was able to feature actually 13 locations that we have. This event has now spurred on to have multiple events for 2021 that will be announced later. But the proceeds, or part of the proceeds from these events are gonna go to help actually market, you know, to advertise our Dine Downtown campaign that does elevate all these restaurants. So, with that, Mayor, if you don't mind, I'd like to turn it over to Matt Cowherd, who would be our next public comment.
Absolutely, Matt. And I like your conversion swag there with a little Christmas tree. That's awesome.
This is a shirt we released a couple of years ago. I think we have a couple in here still. But, so, yeah, for those of you who don't know me very well, I, my background was, I had a construction company for 15 years before starting Conversion Brewing. And so, kind of puts me in a unique situation to understand the things that we're gonna have to overcome to be able to make some of the changes happen for the downtown restaurants. And I think that's why they kind of picked me to come and be the liaison to kind of start this conversation. Hopefully, the purpose of the conversation would be to ask the city to grant permission for the downtown restaurants to safely expand outdoor dining. Unfortunately for, I guess, probably the United States, maybe the whole world, the restaurant industry and bar industry has been hitting, has been hit really hard, possibly the hardest out of any industry from the COVID restrictions, depending on what state you live in. And a lot of them made it through the first bit. Okay. This second round of restrictions, starting with the two-week freeze, has really hit the small businesses specifically very, very hard. I know a lot of, I think a lot of people don't understand that if you're an owner-operator, a lot of these businesses have laid off people and/or cut hours. And if you're to the point where you're not making enough money and you're owner-operator, so you don't have an employee, most of the money that's been set out is not available to you. So, multiple of the restaurants downtown Lebanon have not received any help money. And at this point, they're kind of at their last, on their last leg. I mean, we're trying to get together and try to devise a plan to make it so that they can actually do service again. Yes, we're doing outdoor, or we're doing takeout. But, I mean, you guys, I know most of you guys have supported us a lot in the last, you know, nine months. And you can only eat so much takeout. And so, that's something that we've been seeing slow down. And I believe personally that I think will be in probably this extreme phase until January, February, which is a long time for restaurants to eat all the bills and try to make payroll with no and very little income coming in. The plan would be to be able to expand outdoor dining. We've had a little bit going on with our patio, although, you know, that's a very limited amount of seating compared to our restaurant. And so, it's helped a little bit, but the goal would be, you know, at this point, I think we're just trying to save the restaurants. But the goal, my personal goal would be to not just have them be saved, but to have them to be able to thrive during this. But that comes down to, you know, there's a lot of hurdles to get over as far as licensing. But those all start with the city giving us permission to be able to expand to property that we don't own. So, I guess, I don't, is this supposed to be discussion or am I just supposed to present what we have?
Well, it's your turn to talk and present to us. And then at the end, we can have counselors ask questions.
Okay, so, the plan, we got together and talked about a lot of different opportunities and the ways that it work. It is possible to do a kind of shared space in some of the parking lots maybe, or in a park, Strawberry Club or the two-parting lots downtown. It unfortunately wouldn't work really well just because you would have a shared space there. And the food licensing would roll over to that. Alcohol licensing in Oregon, it's a really unique rule that I believe is unique to only Oregon. There's no way to co-mingle licensing. And so, if we were to serve alcohol service like normal, specifically mixed drinks, we would not be able, we would either have to have our section of the tent or it would not be able to be there. The other option would be to have an area that the city were to exempt from the open container law or rule for a specific time. And people could sell mixed or sell sealed drinks and go out there. I see a lot of issues with that. And so, kind of what we've come up with was, I think it would be easiest if each restaurant could maintain, start and maintain their own area. And at this point, it's looking like it probably would need to be a covered area. So, there's 14 restaurants downtown and two bars, all of which serve food. They each kind of have a unique space that they would be able to use. Some of them, it's literally the sidewalk in front and/or the parking spaces in the front. And I know I heard earlier, before the meeting started, there was some discussion about for ballast and how they have changed their seating. A lot of, a lot of restaurants in other cities have expanded already to outdoor. You know, the two-way street or two-lane street, they've blocked off a single lane. And the city has committed, done that for them. And that gives them the ability to, you know, not only stay in business, but keep their employees employed as well. And so, kind of, we have a list of, I sent that to a couple of people. I don't know if it got to all the counselors or not, but a list of kind of the spaces that would work well. I know that there's a lot of regulations that we would have to, have to still use. And if that's okay, we understand that. I guess the first step for us would be to have the city grant us permission. And then we can move forward with there, from there, to be able to get permission from our licensing agencies and all. So, make sure that, you know, structural code, fire code, egress, all those things that we're gonna have to go through. And those are things that we deal with on a regular basis as a business. We have to maintain those things in our business. And so, we're We have to maintain those things in our business. And so we're, we're pretty aware of, of those. And that if we expand our space, it still applies to all those.
Okay, was that it? Did you?
That's pretty much it. If you guys have questions, go ahead and ask them, I guess. But I think that's about where we're at.
Okay. Counselors have any questions?
I do.
Yes.
Um, I, I didn't get that information. If you could try to maybe send it. It looks like Michelle didn't get it either. I, I would love to see that because certainly it would be nice to kind of look at and see what we can do to support our business here, here in town.
Yeah. Yeah, I can definitely get those to all you.
So I have a question. I'm a little unclear. Are we talking about closing this? Is the request to close the sidewalks in the downtown area and then some of this, the parking spaces? And then in addition, like some of the streets or I, I guess I'm unclear on the specific kind of ask, if you can help enlighten me a little bit on that.
So each, each restaurant kind of had a different ask. That's what, what this list was. And there's a lot of options for them. I, I think the reality is there's there's a huge financial constraint on building something like this for them. And some restaurants have the ability to do a huge thing. And some of them, you know, they're already out of money. They, they are, they are strained and it's going to be difficult for them to build out anything really. And that's, you know, that's one of the next hurdles that we're going to have to deal with is where can we get some money to help these guys do, do something where, so they can continue to stay open. And yeah, I mean, so the basic options would be, so Conversion Brewing, Bigfoot Grill are both adjacent to a city-owned lot. So we could have a tent out there. And then some of the other ones have space behind the building in the alley. Some of them have space in front of the building. Sidewalk seating would have to keep sidewalks open for egress. Most of the sidewalks are 10 feet wide. So there's plenty of room to have a row of tables and still have your ADA accessibility on sidewalk. And then the, another option which would help a lot would be to block off some spaces in front of the buildings. And that would give you another, you know, eight feet of, of seating space. With that comes another layer of safety that would have to be put in place. You can't just allow right next to the highway and expect that to be fine.
Matt, would you, would you be having to cover those spaces if you were out in, say, the parking area along the sidewalk, along the curb?
That would be the ideal situation. And, and that's why I said, you know, at, at that point, we have to kind of look at what our options are and what would be within the codes that were required to meet, to be able to cover those. Yeah, the, the idea that we would have covered space, the regulations do require that we only have one side on a tent. So you'd have to have three sides open. And that's the reason for outdoor dining was, is a better vision. But yeah, so ideally we would try to cover them. And yeah, that's, you know, we're kind of early in this process of working through what people are wanting to do and, and or able to.
Matt, have you met with any staff yet? Or the, the, is this is kind of your first, like, step?
City staff, is that your question, Rebecca?
To see if you've met with any of the staff yet. I mean, I think, go ahead.
So yeah, I mean, I've, I've had a conversation with Paul, just letting you know, had a kind of our initial conversation with Jason about fire codes and, and kind of sent over some information for me. So I, I could get that started. You know, I'm, I'm pretty well versed in the codes. So I kind of looked them up myself with what I, I could find. But yeah, so it's kind of we haven't met since, met with staff yet, but just wanted to bring it before you guys and just so everyone understood how it's, I mean, it's getting, yeah.
I just think our staff in particular is really good in thinking outside the box. And I think that's what, that's what we need to do. And, and if you need, if you need consensus from the council in support of that, I'm all, I'm all for it. There's you know, if, even if there's a little variance that we need to find, as long as it's, you know, we really keep the safety and it sounds like, you know, you know, you know why there are codes. And, and so if there's a silly rule like we need 13 parking spots here and we just can't go down to 11 because that's what the code says. Well, that's not really a safety issue. So I gotta think that our staff, given, given the direction from us, would be very flexible.
If I may interject just a second, the meeting with staff, no, staff has been contacted. It, of course, this committee has worked alongside and this is brought up before with Alicia Rogers. And I've talked to businesses beforehand and of course, back and forth. But that, he said, that actually information that was requested, I can send to counselors right now, or I could even do a screen share if you want to see what businesses are looking at and what they're asking for. So you could just let me know how you want the information and I'll send it over.
Yeah, I'd rather just have an email so we can continue on.
Perfect. Do it now.
Yeah, same for me, Kathy.
Same for me.
I guess I'd like to hear staff's opinion because a lot of this seems to revolve around first, the hurdle of sidewalks. Can we do it right? And, and if we can do it, how do we do it? And then if not sidewalks, then parking lots, can we do it? How do we do it? And then, or maybe a more of the two. I'm very supportive in doing whatever we can do to make sure that we provide these, these restaurant owners and business owners a safe place to, to expand their, their business or, or not even expand, but maintain their business to, to keep the economy going. But I want to make sure that we don't do something illogical or something that's going to come back and potentially put a restaurant or the city in a position of liability. And so I, I'd like to ask Kelly and Ron, because engineering and planning pretty much would, would run that first part to chip in and give some input on, on their thoughts on what was proposed.
Sure, I can start and then Ron can tag me in and, and tell me if I'm saying something wrong, but we have at least been aware of the requests since, I think, last Friday. And we've been having some communications in the staff side. We don't know specifics of exactly what's being requested. So it'd be great to see that, that document that you guys are talking about. But in, in general, there's the, the easy way, which would be putting them congregate in parking lots. And, and example that I've seen where you've been able to do alcohol sales with a bunch of restaurants in a communal row has been a blockade of the, the tent area. If you have four restaurants, it's blocked off in four different cordoned areas and that's your service area. And so there's, there's possibilities how to do that. You have it in one location. Everybody's in a shared space and it's easier to manage while you still maintain your open parking spots and sidewalks. Understand that that's the easiest way, but not necessarily the, the most optimal way of operations for the restaurant. So you can look at the on-streets and sidewalk service areas. A lot of the areas where we've seen this, there are kind of the two options. I drove by one this afternoon in Salem where they use the parking spaces themselves as the outdoor dining area. The difference between their downtown and ours, a little bit more space to play with. So they have angled parking spaces, so a wider area to deal with than the parallel spaces. So we'd probably be having to look at a hybrid between where to put that within that communal space. There's the options of doing some on-streets blockades to, to make some of the side streets more amenable to it, but that would take some coordination with the Public Works Department. And it also has to be a question about whether or not those blockades exist every day of the week or just during weekends. But there are things to consider through this whole process. Matt has been understanding that there's things that need to be considered. You know, on the city side, we're looking at ADA access, making sure that everybody still has access to all of the public areas. We're also making sure that the tents going to be secured in a manner in which when we get those lovely windstorms around here, that they're not going to be blowing away in the middle of Main Street. And those are our significant concerns. I know from the fire side, there's going to be the question of are you going to provide heating for it? And if so, how, while still meeting, meeting the fire code? And so I think in general terms, we're already troubleshooting it. We're looking forward to the next step of actually meeting probably via Zoom, because that's a real way I go through the nitty gritty details, if that's the, the route and direction that, that we want to go through based off of city council's direction. There are those details that need to be worked out. There are two options. I think safest, easiest, quickest to happen would be Ron, do you have anything else to add?
Kelly, right at the very end, that last little paragraph there, you, you kind of cut out. So could you repeat that last part?
Generally speaking, there's options available. The easy one is the, the congregate dining in a parking lot or, or two parking lots where we can cordon off for specific restaurants. That's the quickest, the, the easiest and the most contained, where you're not impacting on the street. But the, the in sidewalk and blocking off other parking spaces is also an option. We just need to work through the rules to make sure the diversity of everybody while also providing the opportunity for that better?
Thank you. Yep. Trey, did you have a question?
Well, not necessarily a question. I just wanted to make a, make a couple of points. I mean, there's a lot of options that are available regardless of whether the, the council weighs in or not as far as variances and adjustments that that city staff has in, in, in responding to specific requests. And I guess the, the, the issue here is, is certainly the expediency and how fast that can happen. I mean, I did a little bit of research just recently on what other cities and not only in Oregon, but across the country are doing it. And normally the, the, the big difference is that cities are focusing on is instead of a six-month application process, you know, it's the turnaround time on, on doing something that makes a difference in that, in, in, you know, as soon as possible. So I mean, I think we're talking and Kelly, you can, you know, you know, this part of the code better than I do, but we're talking more about addressing specific requests that would already have some applicability or possibility within the code and simply do it in a, in a more expedient manner, not necessarily changing the code or necessarily ignoring the code or anything like that, but simply addressing it. But it's also easiest if we have specific requests or as you're working through with the, with the, with city staff of, of following through with actual applications and requests that the city can then help with. Because I think we're all on the same page as wanting to do anything we could to, to help these businesses make it through some very difficult times.
Yeah, and we do have a basis of our code already. We do already allow for outdoor dining. We do already allow for certain things to be within the public right of way. And through the state of emergency, we do have additional flexibilities to further relax the code in terms of the processing. We're already incredibly fast. And so that's not really the problem. It's really just the logistics of trying to coordinate all 14 individuals. And so if we have a single voice and if we have a community plan that can be implemented as a group, that's going to be the quickest, fastest, easiest way to do it. But, but yeah, we, the, the expediency is not the issue. It's the, what codes do we need to relax and, and the process and, and just getting together in a room?
Yeah, and Kelly, I, I did, I didn't mean with Lebanon, that was the problem. I was just saying around the country, when I see the differences, it's that's what all the councils and governments have weighed in on is the, is the, is how fast it can happen. But what we really need is to just address specifically what is wanted and what we can do and, and how to get there. And I mean, I, I definitely came in at this, kind of at the last minute and had a, just a little while to, to look at it. But certainly it's being addressed across the country and there's certainly things we can do. But again, like Kelly said, it's, it's all about addressing it, you know, from a, a specific request and, and a group request would be the, the fastest and the, and the easiest way to address it.
We're not going to be recreating the wheel here. There, there's plenty of examples across the country, but also within our general region where we can pull from as, as examples of how it's been done. So yeah, we're just ready for the next step whenever you guys are.
Ron, did you want to comment?
No, I think Kelly, Kelly summed it up. I mean, really, we're going to have to look at the, the safety issues of it. Depends on what you do on Main Street. I mean, ODOT regulates Main Street. We don't. We have jurisdictions on our side streets. And, you know, with the state of emergency, you guys, we, we've got some leeway to, to take that on. I think a lot of it is, I, I don't think it has to be a big, long drawn out process. We just need to make sure it's safe, meets codes that, you know, what is going to keep people safe. Short of that, I don't, I don't see a big issue with it. I think the congregate one's going to be a faster, easier one to, to get through. Individuals, you know, you're going to have to look at every individual restaurant and go, okay, so you're going to maintain in, in most cases, probably 42 inches for ADA access. You know, you can, you can squeeze that down to three feet and, and a certain amount of distance, but in, in what we're talking about here, it'd be 42 inches most likely. So how does that work? You've got a lot of obstacles on Main Street, light posts, planners and stuff. And just working through those issues, are we going to take parking off of Main Street? These, these are the things that you know, we can, we can go out and today and, you know, we can block off parking spaces and do that. But the other businesses that are around that, I think we would want some input from those as well, right before we started shutting parking off and, and did stuff like that. So it's definitely doable.
Thanks, Ron. Any other questions, comments?
Sure, I have, oh, go ahead. Well, I already started. I want to keep going. I had one question particularly for probably Cassie, I think, or maybe Matt. You know, kind of dovetailing on what Ron mentioned about other businesses, has there been input for some of those retail businesses downtown? You know, this is kind of their busy time too, in terms of any sales they might be having. And if we're talking about possibly blocking off some parking spaces in that area that I'm just wanting to know what the temperature of that kind of response has been? Or if there has been any coordination with them yet?
So in talking with other businesses downtown and in talking with the restaurants, they were looking at maybe one to up to two maybe spaces in front of their own particular establishment. And not spreading, you know, down the corridor or anything like that. But the input from other businesses are, they're, they're able to open to some, some capacity. And a lot of our businesses have, have seen, some have seen sales spikes because, you know, they are a hobby business or they are something that people are utilizing to kind of pass the time during the time of COVID. So they're willing to help our restaurants because there is no capacity for them to, you know, work outside of takeout. So many of them, and I'm sure if the council was meeting voices lifted, they'd be willing to do so. But many of them are in support of our downtown restaurants to keep them going because they recognize they are the anchors to much of their business. So they're willing to support them in this.
Wayne, did you have a question?
Yeah, Michelle asked it. That's what I wanted to know too.
Okay.
And that restaurant guide or that restaurant list of needs was sent over to everybody. I just wanted to outline that there is a column for ODOT's request. And then there is a column that will say city's request. Ready to go means that these restaurants have the capacity and they're ready to go and move. And when it says building capacity, it means they are either attaining materials or possibly even the funds to continue to move forward with their request. So not everyone's at that financial ready to go stage, but they're, they're working towards it.
Okay, at this point, unless there's any other dire questions, go ahead, Jason.
I have one last. I want to, I want to take off my counselor hat and put on my fire marshal hat just to dress it on behalf of the fire district. I think if we're looking at the, the options, the option for the congregate space would provide the fire district a little more flexibility with code alignment. and the ability to provide maybe a more desirable atmosphere potentially for the restaurants and for the customers versus, so having one or two of those areas controlled versus having 14 different areas to control with much smaller spaces, we likely would not have the flexibility to allow certain variances or things like that. So I just wanted to make that clear for the group.
Okay. And I think at this point, I think we've kind of beat this one up. And I think that we should just move this over to staff and let Matt and Cassie and Alicia work this out. And I believe, if I'm mistaken, and please correct me if I'm wrong, the council's pretty much in agreement. This is something that we would love to see as long as it can be done safely, as long as it can be done properly, and as long as staff is happy with the way that they're going to proceed.
One last thing on that. Is there the potential, and I'm not making a promise here or asking for a promise, but is there the potential for the possible use of either CARES Act money or some sort of COVID-related money for the city to help pick up the cost of this congregate space? If we go that route so that these businesses don't have to spend money on a tent or a heating system or something like that?
I've thought that same thing, that there might be some funds available. And if not, I mean, if the city put out $5,000 or $10,000 for a tent and some equipment, it seems like it would be a good economic boost.
Nancy, do you think that's possible?
I think that that is possible for some CARES Act money. I think what I've heard in kind of popular media are questions about the availability of tents because there's kind of been a run on them for people to do outdoor dining. So whether we could get something in time might be a bit of a challenge. But I certainly think that that's something that we can look into and see if we could make that happen.
I'd like to see the city bear as much financial burden as possible and as they can for these businesses in this time, so.
Anything else? Okay, with that, Cassie and Matt, we'll just have you meet with staff. And if you have any other questions, go back to us and hopefully we'll be good and get something done for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming and bringing it to us.
Bye, guys.
Okay, next up is, so we have public comments, public hearing. Number one, comprehensive plan map amendment, CPMA 2001. And I'm going to open up the public hearing at 6:57 PM. And your patience is appreciated as our city attorney goes through the required hearing procedures.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This hearing will be held under the quasi judicial hearing procedures of ORS 197763. At the commencement of the hearing, I will ask all counselors to announce any ex parte contact or conflicts of interest. The hearing will start out with the staff report. The staff report will be presented and it shall include information which staff believes is relevant to the identified criteria from the city's comprehensive plan and/or land use regulations. We'll then allow questions of the staff by council. We'll then have public testimony. The audience may provide oral or written testimony concerning issues that are relevant to the hearing. All testimony or evidence must be directed towards the criteria described in the staff report or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or land use regulation. Most importantly, failure to raise an issue, including constitutional issues or other issues related to the proposed conditions of approval, if any accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the city council and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issues, will preclude an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals. Testimony of the witnesses, proponents of the, excuse me, the applicant will go first and then supported by any proponents of the application. Next, we'll have any opponents of the application and then rebuttal to address any evidence brought up in the opposition. We will then close the public hearing and all discussion will be among city council. Generally, a decision will be made tonight. In some cases, it can be held over or it can be approved or denied or approved with conditions. With that, Mr. Mayor, you can ask if there's any ex parte contacts or conflicts of interest and begin the hearing. Paul, you're muted.
I'm just talking to myself. Do any counselors wish to declare ex parte contact, conflict or bias?
No. No.
Okay. Sina, have any comments regarding objections to the notice that was sent in this case to the jurisdiction of this body to hear and consider this case then received?
No.
Okay. Will the community development director please present staff report?
Yes, sir. I'll be sharing my screen now. Can everybody see it?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Hey, good evening. Before you tonight, propose amendments to the comprehensive plan map designation for the property located on the west side of Stolt Hill Road, north of Von Lane. A public hearing for this application was held before the planning commission on November 8th. And the planning commission unanimously recommended to the city council to approve the requested amendment. This evening is the second public hearing on the item. Proposal, the public testimony that's been provided and the planning recommendation and render final decision. So the property is currently within the county unincorporated area, but it is within the city's urban growth boundary. Currently, there is no proposal to annex property in the city. And there's also no development proposal associated with this application. The northern 16 acres of the property is currently designated as residential mixed density. And the remaining 55 acres to the south are designated as industrial. The applicant is requesting to amend the comprehensive plan map designation for the southern 55 acres to be consistent with the northern as residential mixed density. So basically, to sum it up, the question before the council tonight is not regarding any development or annexation, but it's simply the question about whether or not the property should be designated as industrial or designated as residential and which one is more. So with that consideration, the rest of the presentation is we'll provide information on the site characteristic and the right area. So the subject property is subject to three different overlay zones. Along the northern portion of the property runs Oak Creek, as you can see in the middle picture. And it's identified as a riparian protection zone as well as within the floodplain overlay. There's approximately 16 acres on this northern portion that's impacted by these areas. And there's no development that would be able to occur in these areas. The subject property is largely impacted by the airport overlay zone, which would constrict both industrial and residential developments on the site. For industrial development, it would be restrictive of the type of business that could occur to where it can emit smoke or dust or steam of any cream to provide a visual impairment for the airport's approached surface area. And then for the residential use, it limits the area that you can see on the screen in this blue here. It limits all of that area to be a maximum density of up. Basically, what this means, the majority of the site would not be able to be developed in any excessive density whatsoever. And so it would preclude the development of any town homes or apartment-type development for the site. Up is the public facilities. As part of the evaluation of the comprehensive plan designation, there's a required evaluation of the city. For city sewer and water, there's currently no infrastructure in the area of the subject property. However, upon completion of the West Side Interceptor project and a planned water project within the city master plan, both utilities would be available in the vicinity of the subject property, which the developer, at any time in which the property is developed, would be able to extend those utilities to the property upon annexation. For transportation, this is the interesting part. When the property was originally designated as industrial, there was a bypass route that was planned that would connect the subject site to all of the other industrial sites along the western edge of the city and would connect the site to the designated truck routes. However, in 2018, the city underwent the process of updating its transportation system plan. And through that update, that bypass route that made that connection was eliminated as consideration for any development project in the future. So what it essentially did was it cut this property off from any designated truck routes and it restricted the access of any industrial-type traffic to utilize the intersection of Airport Road and Stolt Hill Road. And as I'm sure you all know, that intersection is not a traditional intersection and it has quite the steep angle to travel on, which is incredibly difficult, if not prohibitive, for truck traffic, which essentially makes the property no longer viable for an industrial use. And so that concludes the discussion of the public facilities. Overall, the site can be serviced. And overall, due to the transportation, the residential use is an even more appropriate option. Finally, for conversion of the land designation as part of the comprehensive plan, we have to have a buildable land inventory that says that we have enough mix of each type of use. And on the slide, you can see that each of the uses, both residential mixed density as well as the industrial use, had an excess of land available in the city. And so the conversion of this property from industrial to residential would not be considered a negative impact to the buildable land opportunities for industrial uses. So as indicated during the introduction, the city had a public hearing already through the planning commission in November. Before we got to the planning commission hearing, we did an initial notification way back when in September and we received quite the input from the residential communities surrounding the property that were in, including a petition that was signed by several of those neighbors that were in opposition to this change. All of the comments that were received have been included in the city council agenda packet and were also provided to the planning commission for consideration. The general comments and scopes you can see on the screen, but it was ultimately related to development impacts and loss of the rural feel as well as loss of the wildlife that currently occurs in the neighborhood. The planning commission reviewed the public comments and considered all of the evidence and the evaluation of that ultimate question, which is what development use is more appropriate for the site, industrial or residential? And the planning commission unanimously voted that due to the transportation aspects and those other items that were discussed, the site was ultimately more appropriate for residential. And that is the recommendation that they put forth to the council. So before you tonight, is that same consideration? And with that, I will conclude my staff reports and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Kelly. Questions of staff?
Staff or council?
Well, questions for staff of council.
Okay, yes. So I read through this and, you know, when we were approving the apartment complex over there near Walmart, you know, one of the things that we talked about is when you have property, you know, doing your homework and checking to see, you know, there's empty land there. Somebody must own that. And potentially, they have the right, you know, obviously to build there. Well, with that in mind, if the folks out there that live out there had did that, then what they would have found out is that it's listed as industrial and not residential mixed or high, the terminology that we're using here. So I feel bad for them. I kind of feel like, you know, if I want to live out in the country and I did my homework and I made sure that this isn't where you can just put up a bunch of houses and have all this now new traffic and whatnot, that I feel like we're stepping on them and saying, well, it doesn't matter. We already have this designated. And so that designated land now, well, I don't like that designation, so I want to change it to fit my needs. And they don't even want to build there yet. For me personally, I like to see us table this. I don't think we need to make a decision right away. I definitely hear the plight of the people that live out there. I don't think it's right that if they wanted to live in the city, they'd live in the city. A lot of those folks out there have chosen to live out and have some property and get a different view of kind of like being in the country but not. And this kind of just says, you know what? It doesn't matter what that was already designated. We're just going to request that we can change it and then this is how it's going to be. So I personally am not for this right now. Again, especially since they don't have any plans. I don't really see the reason why we need to push through this and make a decision tonight. And I'd like to perfect my table.
Well, I can understand your point, counselor. But on the flip side, this was zoned industrial and you could have an N-Tech setup shop or a facility like N-Tech setup shop in that area, put it, set up a 50-acre campus and have truck traffic coming in all through the day and night. And I think at that point, the community will be up in arms because there was industrial things going in there and it was just a grass seed field when they bought their property. So it's kind of a mixed bag. I don't, I think change is difficult no matter what, especially when you own property and you have this beautiful view. And now all of a sudden, there's this threat of losing your beautiful view because someone has decided to develop the land per the development code. And that's what we're examining here is not whether we agree with it or not. What we're examining here is does the application meet the development code requirements of the state of Oregon and Lynn County and City of Lebanon? And if it does, we legally have no recourse to deny it. So while I understand their plight, I also understand the planning commission's decision based on the facts presented. And I don't see a reason to table this. And I certainly, unfortunately, don't see a reason to vote no on this.
And you know, the planning process is very specific. When you sit on planning commission, you learn that. And it goes to the criteria, not to the feeling. And I hate to say that, but you know, it is. It's, you know, you get a piece of property, you got this great view. And all of a sudden, some business comes in and wants to move in and creates no view anymore. Well, that's not what we're deciding. And this is not a development. This is a zoning that has specific criteria that has been met as far as the planning commission is concerned. And they're bringing it to us to see whether we believe that it has been met or not too. And I did read through all those comments. There was a lot of them and I understand that. But this is criteria. This is not like, oh, the neighborhood's not going to look good anymore. This is very, very specific. That's why Trey has to read all these things. That's why Kelly goes through all these things. The planning process is real, real specific and we have to follow those rules.
If I might, well, just sorry Karen, really quick. I think it's important to have a 30-second conversation about the urban growth boundary. So the property itself is not annexed into the city, but it is within the city's urban growth boundary. And when a property is in the urban growth boundary, what that means is that it is intended to and will eventually be developed. And so the city has the property. It has a requirement to provide a mix. It has a requirement to provide the opportunity to expand the growth of the city and that is within the urban growth boundary. And so the question isn't, will this property be developed or not? The question is, the property is intended to be developed. And now the question is, because of changes circumstances in the transportation plan within the growth pattern in the city, the question before the city council isn't whether to approve development in the property or not. It's what is the most appropriate type of development for that? Is it industrial or is it residential? But ultimately, the urban growth boundary means intended for that property to be developed.
No, I hear that. And so I guess I'm for leaving it as industrial.
Well, I would certainly disagree with that, counselor, but you know, our planning commission looked at all the criteria. That's what they are there to do for us at the council. They are recommending to us that they have done their job and that it should be mixed density, residential, whatever, when it comes time to develop it. And I would certainly think that would be much more satisfactory to the residents of that area than industrial. So I see no reason to table or vote no.
This is what Counselor Furlough, I think it's consistent with the law that we need to do that. Should we vote against it, the applicant could go to the land use board and have our decision overturned, which would happen in a heartbeat.
I think so.
I echo a lot of the comments here, but especially as Kelly pointed out, because it is within the urban growth boundary, I would, you know, as if someone wanted to develop it, that's what that, that's what those lines are there for. So I don't see it as something that needs to be tabled at this time or that I need to vote no on. Thank you.
Okay, so Karen has asked to table this, so do I have a second on that?
We don't need to table it. I mean, I just, I wanted to voice my opinion and hear, I mean, obviously, I understand that, you know, even just two years on council, all this, you know, the laws and all that, I understand is massively depth, and I don't have all that knowledge. So if it's regardless what we feel, and if we are obligated by law to allow it because it meets the criteria for the code, then I guess we got to do that.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay, at this point, I'll close the public hearing at 7:16.
If I may, sir, we haven't gone through and had the applicant comment or open for other public comment.
Well, I was just following the script that I was given. Okay, so at this point, was there any comments or discussion regarding those four, the development?
I think the applicant's available to speak.
Yeah, good evening. This is Kyle Latimer, I'm representing the owners on this application, and I don't have a whole lot to add to Kelly's staff report, other than to say, the south 55 acres is owned industrial, the north 16, a budding industrial property north of that is already zoned, mixed density residential. So and the uses north, east, and south are residential already. I think in the application, we've pretty clearly laid out that we comply with the comprehensive plan, plans and goals, and therefore the state planning goals, and specifically the facility plans for sewer and water, and also the transportation system plan. As Stolto Road is, future classification is a minor arterial. If you have any specific questions on the application, I'd be happy to field those.
Any questions of the applicant? Okay, thank you, Kyle. Seeing none, I will ask the community development director, was there anybody against that is here to speak?
We did have a request of an individual to participate in the hearing, but I'm not sure if they're here to speak in favor or against. I think it's Ms. Leslie Gill.
Yes, I am here.
Go ahead, Leslie. You can go ahead.
Our family just owned some of the property adjacent to it, and I just wanted, we just wanted to hear what was going on, and none of us live in Lebanon anymore. So we're just trying to dial in to what's happening. So, but I don't have any particular comment on the zoning at this point.
Okay, well, thanks for checking in.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Does that cover that, Kelly? Did I get it all?
You're all good, sir.
Just want to make sure. Now, the public hearing is closed at 7:19. Any other council discussion? Okay, will the city attorney please read the ordinance? Title of the ordinance?
Yes, I will, as soon as I get back to that. Let's see here. Sorry, it's 246 pages, I got to find the right page. Ordinance Bill number 2020-16, ordinance number 2956. That's not the, is that the right one? Yes. A bill for an ordinance amending the Lebanon Comprehensive Plan Map Designation to establish the residential mixed density designation for the property filed CPMA 20-01 Rock Hill LLC. Move for approval.
It's been moved in second to prove ordinance number 2956. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? All right, the ordinance passes. Thank you, everybody. Thanks, Kyle. All right, next up, findings for exemption from competitive bidding, Westside Interceptor Project, and that'll be Ron Whitlatch. And this is a public hearing. So the public hearing for findings and exemption from competitive bidding, Westside Interceptor Project is now open at 7:21. Do we have any comments regarding the objections to the notice that was sent in this case or to the jurisdiction of this body to hear and consider this case then received?
None to my knowledge, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Seeing none, the engineering services director will provide a staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. So what we have before you tonight is a public hearing for exemption of competitive bidding for our Westside Interceptor Project. The staff report is attached, I'm not going to go through it, but I'll give you an idea of why we're doing it. We're proposing to use a construction manager, general contractor to do the next phase of the Westside Interceptor Project. Reasonings behind that is due to the logistics of a 20-some-odd-thousand-foot project that encompasses almost four miles. We need some help with that. Real-time pricing is another big issue. Some of the preliminary pricing that we got, just in quotes, from several different contractors, where they varied in prices from $100 to $200 a foot on a 20,000-foot job that's, you know, in the neighborhood of $2 to $3 million. So we really need to nail this thing down and the complexity of it. It's in places can be 20 to 23 feet deep. We're looking at different options still with our design team. You know, when we do this RFP, whether we use micro tunneling in places like that, whether we do open cut in those places, and we've got a lot more flexibility and options that we can have when we have CMGC process in which we sit down with our engineering, our design firm, which is Udell Engineering, our owner's rep firm, which is David Evans and Associates, and us, and the contractor, and we develop a plan moving forward. So the plan would be to exempt this from bidding. We've listed out the criteria. I believe that it meets all the criteria. ORS 279335 requires that we go through this process in order to exempt from your normal design bid-build process, and that's where we're at tonight. And we recommend that the city council pass a motion to exempt from competitive bidding for the Westside Interceptor Project. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Okay, first off, do we have any comments on this public hearing? Anybody receive any?
No.
Cena, public hearing is closed at about 7:24 PM. Council discussion, questions?
I have a question for Ron in regards to open cut and boring. Is there a substantial difference in cost?
The reason that you would look at micro tunneling is because your open cut in certain cases, from what we've gathered, we've done a little research and met with some micro tunneling firms, and at the 18 to 20-foot mark, it becomes competitive with open cut. So we want to list that as an option. The open cut, we're going to have a lot of it that's going to be open cut, but with having it, the ability for a contractor to bid out those different alternatives rather than us try to bid it in a design bid-build, we could get a micro tunneling firm that says, hey, we can do this for X dollars, we don't have to deal with the groundwater conditions, and we don't have to deal with the restoration or as much of the restoration. So that's kind of the thought process behind it. We'll know more. You know, we'll put an RFP out sometime after the first of the year. We're still doing a little bit more work to get ready for that. The first portion of this is, I would call it a small contract. I guess if you remember back to our water treatment plant, we did a pre-construction phase service where we bring a contractor in, we finalize the design, do a design review with them, do a constructibility review, and then from there, we negotiate guaranteed maximum price with said contractor. They've got all the qualifications listings, the safety listings. So that's kind of the approach that we would take. I think it was very successful on the water treatment plant, and with a project this size, I would assume that it'd be successful again.
The flexibility is great.
Yes.
Having that, yeah. Thanks, Ron.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the exemption for competitive bidding on the Westside Interceptor Project. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. Thanks, Ron.
Thank you.
All right, next up, intergovernmental agreement with the city of Brownsville for street sweeping presented by Matt Atkins.
Mayor and City Council, good evening. I'm bringing before you tonight an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Brownsville. We have for years been doing street sweeping for the city, and I believe it was this last year, as we were trying to invoice them, there was some communication between Jason Williams and myself about the amount we were charging. And as we went back to look at an agreement, we couldn't find none. So with that, we started to undertake the task of going out and putting together an agreement. Can you hear me all right?
Huh?
Okay, sorry. So with that, we went out and we started this process. We went in and we looked at, okay, what is the labor we're charging for our staff? How much are we spending on the equipment, the maintenance, the operating expenses? We came up and we determined that we needed to charge about $100 an hour to do the street sweeping. We were charging far less than that, and so that's what kind of made it happen. When we talked to Brownsville about it, they were like, oh, that's a lot more than what we've been paying. And as we explained, kind of why the amount went up so much, you know, those reasons I just said, they then said, oh, I guess that makes sense. So they've asked us to already actually bill them at the new rate from July through now. And so we've done that, and just looking to council to approve this IGA to continue forward with this amount at this point. I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys have.
What were we charging, Matt?
We were charging less than $700 a quarter.
You're muted.
I'm muted?
Sorry about that. How many hours approximately do we spend out there, do you know?
About six hours a month. That's where we came up with the $600 a month in the contract. Said, you know, for the normal monthly sweeping, that's kind of what we'll do. And then if you request, hey, something happened, we want you to come sweep additionally. I said, you know, it'd be an extra $100 an hour for us to come out and do that. That includes the travel time it takes for us to drive over there and back and do the street sweeping. And we'll keep an eye on this going forward, and we've notified them through the contract that we will be adjusting it as years go forward. And as we've noticed, either it's taking more time or as the cost of labor and equipment continues to increase.
It's been moved in second to approve the IGA with Brownsville for street sweeping. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Lebanon Fire District Reserve Parking Lot Request Mean and Vine Street Parking Lot.
Thinking this fair?
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, sorry about that. So a while back, we were approached by the Lebanon Fire District in regards to parking downtown. I think in my staff report, it shows that while they're doing construction of the new fire station, they intend to rent the MBBA building for their administrative staff, which is down on Main Street. They approached us and asked if we would be willing to look at the option to close off, or not necessarily close off, but reserve five parking spots, which on the grant, or not the grant, but the Vine and Main Street Parking Lot, those spots are closest to the alley along the building, I believe it's Bigfoot Grill Building there, and closest to the alley. On November 17th, we sent out notice to surrounding properties. We received no comment on this, which I was surprised that we received no comment. And with that, we would recommend that pass a motion for a two-year parking resolution that would allow them to sign it appropriately for emergency vehicle parking while they rent the downtown MBBA building for building their new fire station. With that, I can answer any questions.
Ron, do you know how many parking spaces there are in that lot, approximately?
Ah, you know, off the top of my head, I don't. But I can tell you real quick, the handiness of being at my computer. Let's see. We are, if I can get there.
One of the reasons I was asking was, as we were talking earlier about possibly parking lots, that's the other parking lot that would, I could see us being looking at besides Rotary Square.
Exactly. I'm pulling it up here. It's going to be, so along that, we'll call it the south portion of the lot, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13. There's 14 spots along there, and so that'd be five of them. That does not count the additional spots on the north end, which there's an additional, looks like 14 more up there. So 14, 14, 28, so there's still 23 spots there. And then there's also the diagonal parking there on Vine Street itself. So there is a lot of parking right there.
I want to point out, too, the request is only for Monday through Thursday, 7:00 into 5:00 PM. No weekend reserved space that would be open at that point.
Any other questions?
That is a very full parking lot. I mean, that's, that and the diagonal parking there is, is pretty important, but.
So the main reason to ask the city for this, I think speaking on behalf of the fire district, was that we'll be leasing the entire second floor and three other spaces within the MBBA building for our entire administration team. That encompasses about nine people. Several chief officers who respond to greater alarm emergencies in an emergency fashion from typically from the fire station. In addition to the deputy fire marshal, who spends a significant amount of time in and out of the facility as he does inspections and other code enforcement and public education work. So while there is no parking for the MBBA building, the options are either street parking, which we could certainly grab in the morning because we get to work at about 6:30, but that would leave no street parking available for customers. And the district would like to have as little impact as possible on the businesses. So we specifically selected a lot across the street, and we specifically requested the five spots furthest away from Main Street so that the Main Street businesses would ideally still have their customers have the prime spots and be able to access Main Street businesses.
Any other questions? Any other questions?
No, I think that's a legitimate request and I certainly would support that.
Okay, just put, I have the city attorney read the resolution number.
Resolution number two thousand twenty dash twenty-two, a resolution allowing temporary parking of emergency vehicles in the main and Vine Street Parking Lot.
Move for approval.
It's been moved and seconded to prove resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-two. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed?
Abstained.
Very good. The resolution's passed. Even without Jason's vote. Emergency bio solids hauling agreement with the city of Albany, Ron Whitlatch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a kind of a repeat of what we've done for the last two years. Although this agreement gets us through three years. I, I have to say, the city of Albany has been very gracious to us with allowing us to take bio solids to them. So we, we definitely want to give a shout out to their staff and their council over there for allowing us to do this. I mean, we're paying for it, but it is an emergency basis. So what, what we're doing right now at the wastewater plant, to give you an idea, we have a, a small belt press and we're land, land filling a portion of our bio solids. We're looking at the possibility of getting a bigger belt press so that we would land fill all of it and not necessarily need to go to Albany. But in the interim, we want to have this agreement set up with them so that if we do have to take bio solids to Albany, we're not in pickle, so to speak. So with that, they've signed off on it. Miller'sburg signed off on it. And I can answer any questions that you may have, but I would recommend that we move forward with this I G A with the city of Albany.
Move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, you're muted.
It's a rough birthday for you, man.
It's.
Yeah.
It must be getting to you.
Okay, so emergency bio solids hauling agreement with the city of Albany. Now I've completely lost my mind.
Motion in a second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? All right, the motion passes and the mayor's out of his mind. Okay, number six, authorizing an improvement to Clean Water State Revolving Fund Loan Agreement to finance the West Side Interceptor Wastewater System Improvements. That will be Matt Atkins.
Mayor and City Council, good evening again. So before we came before you and asked that you approve us applying for a loan with D E Q for fourteen million dollars for the West Side Interceptor. Now coming to the point where we'd like to move forward a little bit more and actually enter into an alone agreement with them. Currently, the, the loan agreement that we're looking at is just for the design piece of this project because D Q's rates are as low as they've been. They're at one point one eight percent. And if we get this locked in before the end of the calendar year, then we get to keep that rate. And if their rates go down, they've said they will update the agreement and we'll get the lower rate. But if the rates go up, they will amend this contract and add the additional funds that we need to it. We went and we looked, we, we talked with Duncan Brown, who helped us do our last refinance. He told me the bond rates that were currently available, and this is probably two months ago, and rates have gone up, were about two point one, one seven percent. And so the resolution before you tonight gives myself and Nancy Brewer the authority to enter into an agreement with D E Q for a loan and also to amend that loan when the time is right to finish the project that's needed. And I'm available for any questions.
Questions?
No, it's a nice rate.
Okay, seen that, we'll have the city manager read the resolution title.
Or the city attorney. Resolution number two thousand twenty dash twenty-three, a resolution authorizing and approving a Clean Water State Revolving Fund Loan Agreement to finance the West Side Interceptor Wastewater System Improvements.
Move for approval.
Second.
Okay. It's been, it's been moved and seconded to authorize the Clean Water State Revolving Fund Loan Agreement, Resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-three. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Uh, motion, or the resolution passes. Finally, one I don't have to think about, city manager's report.
I thought maybe we jumped to city attorney's report first. Happy birthday and good evening, Mr. Mayor and, and council. I have a couple of things I wanted to highlight. First off, your January meeting will be, it will include swearing in the newly elected counselors. We will, been trying to figure out how to do this in a way that can be done live as opposed to trying to do that over Zoom, which we think would be really awkward. So we are scheduling a four o'clock swearing in at Sandy M Station that would be live in person. But we also recognize that not everybody may be able to get there. So Brent assures me that we could also zoom in the counselors who cannot physically be at Sandy M Station if we needed to do that. What I need to make sure is that we have a quorum because the swearing in has to be at a council meeting and council meeting is going to require a quorum. You don't have to answer right now, but if you're not going to be available at four o'clock for that January meeting, if you would let me and Kim know, then we can make sure we would have a quorum either electronically or present. If you're planning on being present, and in particular, if you're planning on bringing family or significant others to that swearing in to observe, giving us an idea of count of the number of people because we will have physical spacing requirements and all of the Oregon Health Authority and OSHA requirements. So that will just let us know if we're, if we've got enough room and how to manage that. So I'll, I'll call that good. Pointing out that the last page of the packet today is League of Oregon Cities Information for Elected Officials. So if you haven't taken a look at that, please do so. That's, uh, the league is a good resource for providing information to, to us as government employees and council members about what's happening in the state, what's happening with laws that are changing and, and those kinds of things. A lot of let's.
I just wanted to clarify what you said about the, our meeting in January, that we will do the four o'clock meeting at physically. And then we're going to come back at six o'clock on a Zoom meeting and do our regular council meeting that way. So that's, that's the two different parts of that.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for clarifying that. I appreciate it.
Sorry, go ahead.
No, that's all right. Just wanted to let everybody know that staff right now are in the middle of doing the mandatory OSHA trainings. We are watching videos and learning how to wash our hands and feeling really good about ourselves here about that. But, but we have done all of the requirements that OSHA has right now for doing our physical assessments, our infection control plans, our sanitization plans, and now our mandatory employee training is underway. So we should be all square with all of those requirements. You all know that we have this utility billing program to try and help some customers who have been hit by COVID. Frankly, I think Matt and I had expected putting a hundred thousand dollars out on the table. We would be oversubscribed and have hundreds of thousands of people wanting to get help. And instead, we've had a whopping twenty-six, only five of whom have completed the application. So at this point, our partner, Central Atlantic Credit Union, has only given out and approved about thirty-eight hundred and fifty dollars in payments. About half of that, nineteen forty-ish, is coming to the city. And the other half is going to other gas, predominantly electric bills to help people out. We have been advertising that. We've done direct calls to customers, our customers who are past due, to let them know that they can participate. We've had articles in the paper. We have posted up on Facebook. And, and so if you know anybody out there who's struggling with making their payments, this is a really great opportunity. Relatively easy, we do need to see that you've had some impact from COVID because it's using CARES money and CARES requires that link. So you have to have been laid off or lost your job, something along those lines.
Nancy, can I, has anybody contacted United Way? They have the two-one-one line that people call when they are trying to get hooked up with any kind of services.
We'll give them a call again. We've also had multiple conversations with Community Services Consortium. We'd actually thought they would be a partner to give the money out. And they are now in a place to do that. So trying to, they, they've been overrun, I think predominantly with rent assistance. And they've really been focusing on that program.
Yeah, I just have a, I just have a thought, Nancy. Might be good to contact the, I, I think they're now called the Transform Lebanon Group. It's a group of pastors that meet. And Ed Skipper is the man in charge there, and I could probably get you his number. That would probably be a good one too, because social services, that's where people are going to go a lot of times to church. And so having our faith community have that information available would be good.
All right, thank you. Appreciate that. The last thing I wanted to highlight for you is last week, we started having monthly joint meetings with Sweet Home Brown Lebanon, Lebanon Rural Fire, Sweet Home Rural Fire, Brownsville Rural Fire to start talking about this concept of a regional emergency planner. We're working on creating a job description, starting to talk about what we would expect that person to do, doing, pulling some, some comps on what other entities are paying and trying to put together that program, looking tentatively at a start date of July first for that position right now. So that process, which kind of got put on hold for a while, is gearing back up and moving forward. So pleased to be working on that. And that's all I've got today.
All right, thank you very much. Anything from council?
Hi, Mr. Mayor.
Sure, go ahead.
I just wanted to, once again, recognize Counselor Furlough and thank him for his service and his dedication to this council. Bob's been a great resource for us and he's always been a pleasure to work with. And it's nice to have someone who you can disagree with at times and who treats you with respect and listens to you with respect and replies to you with respect. And, and, and it just makes you want to give him back that same level of respect. And, and Counselor Furlough has always been that person for me and I think for all of us. So I really am grateful for his perspective and for his wealth and experience that he was able to share with us and, and keep with us with his government work and his, his hospital and healthcare work. And we will definitely miss him at the meetings and miss his smiling face as he comes in the door every day and, and shakes hands. So thank you, Bob, for, for being there with us and for us. And your community should be very grateful for what you've done. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. And I, I have to thank my wife and my mother-in-law for suggesting that I send in an application years ago to get this thing started. I think they were trying to get me out of the house.
It worked.
I retired three times and I finally got it stuck.
Very good. Anything else for council?
I had one question. Could we just get an update on our water situation about how many we've been working with on payment plans and what the status of that whole project is?
Sure. I guess the, the biggest update would have been last month. As the governor said, we were moving into a freeze. We did not do lock offs. And so we're, we're back to the point where we haven't done lock offs. We're looking at what we're going to do this month and next month as kind of the case count and the, the rules for our county, I guess, are set. I'm trying to think. I know the people that reached out to us last time we would work with, we, we had a number of them that would just pay their whole bill. So we allowed them to do that. We said, you know, if you can pay it, we'll, we'll take it. If not, we'll work out some plans with you. And, um, but we had that, I think we split that original lock off into two. So we had about a hundred that we didn't do. We, we still haven't done those because of the, the freeze. A lot of them that we lock off end up being people that moved out and then new people have moved in and renters. And so we get a lot of turn-ons when we do some of our lock offs because they don't think, oh, I need to change the utility into my name. They just, well, there's water, why do I need to do anything about it? So I will say, doing the lock off does help us to make sure that our records are up to date for those people that move in and move out.
Are we continuing to send late notices?
We, we are sticking with the late notices, but we're not locking off. Last month, we even sent out the calls that said we were going to lock off. Just trying to keep people as current as possible. I think that's the plan moving forward as well.
Okay, anything else from councilors?
Yep, I just wanted to comment to Jason. I really, though I always read the city manager's report and I always appreciate all the directors' input and what they do. But Jason really went above this time and really was really descriptive of what was going on there at the wastewater treatment plant and kind of laying that out. So I really, really appreciated that. Do you want to pass that along?
Thank you.
It's been a lot of work out there and all those employees working so hard. And I, I definitely really appreciate it. Thank you.
He's been very hands-on out there too, much to his dismay, probably, but.
And I, I did have one comment mentioned. I know Counselor Reese Camp had mentioned it to me today. And I haven't been out at night to see it, but apparently the trees downtown don't have lights on this year. There were some problems with them. So we've gotten that corrected. There's some new LEDs that are going towards to the city. They've been donated and those will go up on the trees probably in the next week or so. Is that right, Nancy?
Yes, correct.
Okay, just want to make sure. But just in case you saw that, we'll, we'll get them up. And apparently the last lights were kind of cheap and they melted or did something not good. So these are professional-grade LEDs and they'll be good out there. Okay, with that, we, do we have any press tonight at all? I didn't see anybody. So, okay. So no press comments, any public comments? We don't have that. Next scheduled meetings, the January thirteenth meeting, four P M will be at the travel station. Will be sworn in if you cannot make it and you, or you do not want to make it. We can work with Brent and get you on electronically. Then we'll reconvene at six P M for an electronic regular meeting that evening. All right, with that, I would say we're adjourned. Good night and Merry Christmas, everybody.
All right, good.